Speaking of which. Oh, I thought to my list.
That is me. Hello, how are you? Happy New Year. All right, what do we think? Good, everybody? Everybody good to go?
Let's do it.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the March 11th, 2025. Meeting of the Planning Commission Order. This is the first Planning Commission meeting of the year as we were all just kind of marveling up here. So if you hear us wishing each other Happy New Year, that's what's happening. First thing we'd like to do, first order of business is roll call, and if we could start on my far left, please.
Debbie Gordon.
Doug Cameron.
Scott Brown.
Elizabeth Shin.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. We've got, though the agenda says otherwise, we've got a couple of items under organizational procedural items. The first of which is some information about the joint joint meeting that's coming up, I believe, April 1st.
Good evening. The time has not been set yet. We believe it's going to be in here. That's why I think you all participated last year. Some of you did. So the Planning Commission, City Council, Zoning Board of Appeals and the Development Authority, so and staff. So it's kind of a little retreat. So I think we're gonna dinner. So but we will send you the emails as soon as we get information.
Yeah, for those of us with email problems, that would be April 1st at, will that be at 6:00 P. M.?
We hope so. It could be at 5:00 P. M.
Could be at 5:00 P. M. Okay, so we'll we'll hear on that before long. By the way, is my microphone coming through hot? It feels hot up here. Okay, all right. You know what? If it's not annoying everybody out there, then then all good. All right. Anything else we need to talk about on that? Okay. Thank you. All right, our next order of business, even though it's March, is to elect officers for this year. We're going to conduct this through two votes. One for Chair, one for Vice Chair. And so what I'd like folks to do is, well, if the first of all, if there's somebody who wants to run for one of those, please please go ahead and make yourselves known now. And then we will have, we'll ask somebody to move second, and then we'll go through the parliamentary procedure for that. Is there anybody who is interested in taking the esteemed Chairman seat? I will continue to do it if there is no other interest, but if there is interest, I also don't want to get comfortable up here. So you're not hurting my feelings if you say yes. Okay, well, I'm happy to volunteer. May I trouble somebody for a motion on that subject then?
Make a motion to nominate Thomas O'Brien to continue as Chair of the Planning Commission.
And I refer to motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to nominate Thomas O'Brien as Chair of the Planning Commissions been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? All in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries five to nothing. The second item of business is Vice Chair. Now, let's go through a light process. If there's anybody interested in sitting in that seat, please make yourself known. And we'll work our way through that.
I nominate Scott Brown.
There's been a motion on the floor for Scott Brown to assume the role of Vice Chair again. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Elizabeth Shin seconds. Excuse me, Commissioner Shin. We've got a motion, a second. Is there any debate? All in favor of Commissioner Brown being elected Vice Chair for another term? Raise your hand, please. All opposed, like sign. Carries unanimously, and we have dealt with that. So we are sailing through this agenda. Thank you, everybody, for your confidence. And look forward to working with you all again. All right, next order of business is November 19th. That's right, almost four months ago that we last met, November 19th, 2024 meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at those, establish comfort with them, and if that's the case, may we please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the minutes as they were written.
All right, Commissioner Gordon's moved to approve the minutes as written. Hearing that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Cameron seconds. We've got a motion and a second. At this time, is there any debate as to whether we should approve the minutes as written? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as written, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. And that carries five to nothing. Thank you, everybody. All right.
I have a quick technical question.
Yes.
Can I get a mouse to go with this computer? Please?
Is that the computer that's driving that monitor? That's the one to your left, the laptop there?
Um, it's a separate, oh, maybe.
It is the mouse, though. You remember the mouse?
What's it might teach him?
You know what? It's it's fine. I think.
We move this down so we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable doing that, or do you want to see if I can round up the mouse? Okay. Okay, so there's a mouse on the way. And there's one sitting here. I don't know how easy it would be to flip it over to you. Probably a doggo, yeah. Okay, are you comfortable moving forward? All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Is there any unfinished business at this time? I don't see any on the agenda, but is there anything we need to talk about? All right. Hearing and seeing none, then it's time to consider new business. And before us is RZ 25-01. Request to rezone 56 perimeter center east from OI to PD to allow the construction of a new condominium development. At this time, would be happy to hear presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. So the case that's before you this evening is a request to rezone 56 perimeter center east from Office Institutional to a planned development unit to allow the construction of a condominium development. Just a little background on 56 perimeter center east. It is a 98,000 square foot office constructed in 1976. So it's an older office that's surrounded by a surface parking lot. It's also directly adjacent to I-285. And it has been impacted on the south side of the property by the construction on I-285. You can actually see in the bottom left that they've removed most of the tree buffer that was originally there, and that exists as a permanent construction easement. This is a photo of the survey. You can see that permanent construction easement highlighted in yellow. The property line outlined in a thicker black dotted line. I've also noted some other things just for clarity on the survey. There's currently an access easement, permanent access easement along Lincoln Parkway that goes from perimeter center east to 1455 Lincoln Parkway to the rear of this property, and I've just highlighted that with that purple dashed line. So that will remain even in the final product, and that will be maintained in perpetuity. The existing parking lot is a 357 space surface parking lot, and that's outlined in black. That's the extent. And then the building footprint is outlined in red. There's also a partially daylighted stream along a portion of the western property line. That's about 300 feet long. That is a buffered stream, meaning it has state waters. So the first 25 feet is a state and city buffer. And then there's also the general 75-foot city stream buffer as well. And the parking lot encroaches significantly into that. So part of this project would include removing and replacing a portion of the buffer within excuse me, a portion of the parking lot within the buffer. What they would be replacing it with is a 122-unit condominium development. It would be designed to appear as townhomes from an aesthetic standpoint. The unit sizes range from 1,100 square feet to 2,100 square feet with a maximum height of four stories or 50 feet. The units would have their own parking. It would be through rear access garages. There's also 22 guest parking spaces. One of the major parts of this project, you know, in terms of overall as it relates to our Trail Master Plan, is we are requesting a 12-foot path from the end of the Georgetown Trail to perimeter center east. We find that to be a really important connection. It's not shown on the site plan, so we've included that as a condition that would be adjacent to that access easement along Lincoln Parkway. We're recommending that to be on the north side of Lincoln Parkway to allow for the most continuous connection and the easiest and most legible connection to the existing multi-use path. I've also just outlined some of the units here, just to give you an idea. They're either facing courtyards, or they're facing the interior drives, and you can see that they have interior access garages demarcated by those arrows. These are the elevations. Staff has requested elevations on all four sides. We haven't been provided those, but this is the front elevation. You can see there's a variation of materials, variation in the roof heights, and we have written also some conditions just to ensure that type of design stays consistent in the final product. As far as this project relates to the rezoning criteria, this is in the perimeter center. We've recently conducted a small area master plan, the Edge City 2.0. And in that study, it revealed that there was a significant vacancy in perimeter center and that there's a significantly lower demand for for older office, and that's reflected in those vacancy rates. But there's also significant unmet residential demand in perimeter center. And so based on those trends in Edge City and also based on the community policies in our comprehensive plan, which are, you know, to promote owner-occupied housing and the conversion of surface parking lots, we feel that the project meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. The next criteria is whether the zoning proposal is suitable in view of the use of nearby properties. Perimeter center east for many decades was majority office parks. And over the years, especially since the early 2000s, a lot of those office parks have been redeveloping into multifamily buildings or townhomes. All of those apartment buildings along perimeter center east have replaced older traditional, you know, 1980s-style office parks, you know, with large surface parking lots. And so there is currently a mix of residential and office, and those two uses mix well together, and this would be a continuation of that trend. So we see that owner-occupied residential housing would fit in very well along the character of perimeter center east. So currently, the office institution zoning district does not allow for any residential development, and so it really doesn't allow for any development outside of office. It really wouldn't even allow for the type of zoning that or the type of development you see in the current office trends, which is for more of a mixed-use development. It's a very restrictive sort of older zoning district, and so approving this planned unit development district would allow them to continue the trend of redeveloping office on on this street perimeter center east and gives them the flexibility to be, you know, creative about the layout of that development as well. Again, this will not affect the usability of adjacent property. A residential development is in keeping with with the character on perimeter center east, so we see it as complementary. Again, the the changing conditions in the office market really sort of demand a different approach to the zoning in this area, and we find that a, you know, residential use is appropriate in this area. And we don't have any, you know, historic or archaeological sites here, and we don't feel that this would be burdensome to the existing street transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. It would be very comparable to what's there in terms of the impact on all of those things. So in light of that, we are recommending deferral this evening, but it's not on the basis of the criteria. It's on the basis of the general requirements for the planned unit development zoning district. The code specifies and calls for a lot of detail in the plans. And this is because a planned unit development district does not adhere to a standard set of zoning codes. All of the zoning codes are established for this property in their overall development plan. And so we're requesting additional information for the landscape plan. And we're also requesting additional information on the elevations, so looking for elevations for all four sides. And we're also looking at a planting plan. We want to just ensure that we're able to hold this development to a higher standard and that those types of things don't, you know, fall to the wayside without having those types of strict, you know, zoning conditions already laid out in the district. So that is the reason for our deferral, but if the Planning Commission does choose to recommend approval of the subject case this evening, we have developed a set of conditions that we feel are appropriate. So the first two conditions are pretty standard. It's tying them to their overall development plan, which is included as an exhibit in your package. And then the second condition reiterates a portion of the overall development plan, just limiting it to a maximum of 122 units with a maximum height of 50 feet. And this is just for ease of reference for for the future. That way, future planners or future people researching the entitlements on this property have something easy to refer to in terms of knowing what the density is. So that's the reason we've reiterated that in condition number two. Conditions number three and four are related to sidewalks or multi-use paths, essentially requiring that connection to the Georgetown Trail on perimeter from perimeter center east. And then the second is requiring a streetscape along perimeter center east with a 12-foot sidewalk and a six-foot tree buffer. This would include a a couple of feet of right-of-way dedication, and so we've just made that design subject to the approval of the Public Works Director. The next two conditions are related to interpersonal connectivity. Again, this property is pretty integral to our Trail Master Plan for this part of perimeter center. And so we just want to maintain existing interpersonal connectivity that already exists on the western side, and also to ensure future interpersonal connectivity between this property and 1455 Lincoln Parkway, just so that if there is in the future ever an opportunity for more connectivity from a pedestrian standpoint in this area, that sort of there's less barriers to that. And so that's the reason for conditions five and six. And then seven and eight and nine are related to the design, you know, the aesthetics, ensuring that these buildings have a mix of high-quality materials and that they're also providing, you know, outdoor space for each for each unit. And then the last condition is just related to sustainability, so requiring the use of plants native to the southeast region where possible. And again, this is where more information on the landscape plan would be useful. So overall, those are the 10 conditions. If you guys have any questions about the development overall, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Is there going to be a presentation from applicant at this point? Okay, we'd like to hear that, and I think that'll probably be a good kickoff point for our questions. So if you care to come up and make a presentation, we'd be happy to hear it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Alex Brock with Smith, Gamble, Russell. Office address is 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. Excuse me, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Providence Group of Georgia. With me tonight, I have Mr. Clint Walters with Providence Group. Staff has recommended deferral of this application due to more materials being needed, and we are generally supportive of that deferral. We had received comments from planning staff on February 14th. We had revised our plans and resubmitted on February 28th. We thought we had addressed everything satisfactorily. But last Thursday, when we got the staff report, it was shown that staff still wanted an updated landscape plan as well as more elevations, which we're more than happy to oblige. We just need more time to get those materials together. So we would like to respectfully request the 30-day deferral to allow us time to get those materials together and back to staff so that they may make a recommendation on the application. But we are here tonight to answer questions and listen to any concerns about the application. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. What I want to do here is well, I mean, we were having a public hearing, so I want to go ahead and ask anybody if they want to speak for this, and if you do, please come forward, please state your name and address, and we've got 10 minutes for each side, so I'd ask you to be mindful of that. I don't know if there's anybody else lining up.
Thank you. My name is Guy Dela Justina. I'm a resident of 4260 Townsend Lane, also known as Townsend at Perimeter, the property that is just next to this office, and I fully support this redevelopment. We have a great community there. It's one of the few owner-occupied communities in the perimeter center east area. And all I can wish is that more people had a chance to live in that area. We have a nice park there with two bridges. We have the Montessori School where I take my kid every day walking there. So I'm giving full support that, you know, this project is approved and have more people living in the area and being honor-occupied units there so they can all experience the same level of, you know, joy that I have in living there. That's it.
Thank you. Will anybody else be stepping forward to speak for this?
Good afternoon. My name is Nima Gomgani. I'm with CBRE. I represent 1455 Lincoln Parkway Ownership. Just had a couple of questions. I don't think we object to the development, but just understanding the timing of the construction, specifically the demolition, and how that could impact the businesses of 1455 would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Okay, yes, please. And for those speaking against, if there are any here, you'll have a separate time. Right now, we're on the pros. Okay.
So my name is Cindy Finn. I am an owner and live at 11 perimeter center east, which is probably one of the only condos that you can purchase around that entire circle. So everything else seems to be apartments, and I am definitely looking forward to these condos being built. There are plenty of empty businesses over there. A lot of the high-rises have, everybody's moved out, and there is, you know, as he stated, there's a bridge takes you over to another neighborhood, adding a path to connect all of that. I mean, I think it's just going to be, you know, a wonderful idea. My only question would be, is there any impact or anything about the traffic around that circle, which is already a little bit of a speed zone as it is?
Okay, thank you. Will anybody else be speaking in favor of this? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the in-favor comments. Will anybody be speaking against this project at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the floor for questions and discussions. At this time, Commissioners have any questions or discussions, and I'm going to point to my right, Commissioner Shin, do you have anything that you want to find out more about, or would you rather go? Would you rather go last, first or last? You go last? Okay. Okay, so Commissioner Gordon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the stream buffer. I was confused. So is the stream buffer currently being infringed upon, or is the new development going to cut into that stream buffer?
So the current the current property, the way it's developed infringes on the stream buffer. I'll pull up the site plan, so it's a little bit easier to see. If you see this outline here of the parking lot in this gray shaded area, this is the gray shaded area is the buffer. And so right now, that's basically 100% paved. And the applicant will be reducing that impervious because it won't be just a plain parking lot. It'll be housing internal drives, but also courtyard space and that type of thing. So it will be a So it will be a net reduction in the amount of impervious within the buffer. It'll be a complete removal of all impervious from the twenty-five-foot state buffer. And a net reduction in the overall seventy-five-foot city buffer.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Cameron.
So do you want to ask like all questions now or are we gonna?
Well, here's kind of where I am on that. I feel like we don't have a full picture to look at, but we only have two bites of this apple. And so it's, I'm of the opinion that we go ahead and make as much as we can as we can out of this. Fully knowing that we're only going to have one meeting to actually give our yay or nay. So I. Consider that a, consider that a bit of a passive-aggressive protest, but I don't, I don't love it, but, but here we are. And so, no, I would, I would encourage everybody to ask all the questions that they have at this meeting. With the full knowledge that we may be having the same conversations next time.
Okay. My first question is staff thinks that there's no impact on schools and things like that. And I guess the question for the. Developer is what, how big are these apartments? How many bedrooms are they targeted at families, at individuals?
Yes, the, the units range in size from eighteen hundred, twenty-one hundred square feet. These are typically marketed towards younger professionals. These types of townhomes and townhomes in general are more marketed towards a younger audience, those without kids. So our typical market doesn't have a large impact on schools typically. As compared to a single-family detached development.
So you gave me the square footage and pretend like I don't know what that means because I don't. How many bedrooms, like one, two, three?
I believe those are, they're all three, or two bedrooms, the twos and threes.
Okay. And what's the general price range that you're anticipating?
While we haven't.
I'm asking you to introduce yourself.
I'm Clint Walters with the Providence Group of Georgia. Well, it's a little premature to know our exact pricing. We anticipate these would probably start around five hundred and go up from there. But so affordable by today's standards, but you know, it costs a lot to build things these days.
So two and three bedroom are not going to be marketed to families?
Well, the structure of these is there's two, two units in what looks like each building on the plan. So there's two types of condos. Some of them are two, two, one or one over one. So you've got two floors of a unit and then two floors of a unit. And some of them are back to back. So you've got a unit on the front and a unit on the back, and each unit has a one-car garage. So I think the square footage is actually smaller than eighteen hundred. I think Alex spoke, yeah, there, some of them are smaller than that. So they're, they're not, they're designed for young professionals or for. Older people in the, in the community that, that don't need flats, that want to move out of their, their big done woody house. But can still, can still move around and want to stay in the area. So the, the family buyer in the middle is not, is not a target for this.
Did I hear you say that these are going to be one-car garages that they have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. What generally happens in developments like this to? Places, for example, where a, a couple lives, where each drives cars, where's that other car go? Or do they just have to get rid of it if they're going to live there?
Well, the driveways are twenty feet long, I believe. So there's enough room to park in tandem, one in the garage and one in the drive. And we've got a number of guest places, guest places.
Okay, okay.
Again, that's another reason that they're not set up for, for large families.
Sorry, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure we had that.
Okay. You said the current building is largely vacant, or that's the report. What does that mean? Like, how, how occupied is it? What percentage?
I don't have that percentage in front of me, but it is. Well, over almost a hundred percent. There's very few tenants within the building.
Almost a hundred percent vacant?
Unoccupied.
I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the current, current occupancy percentage, but it is a little deceiving when you drive by there. Because they have some movie studio uses that use it periodically. So sometimes there's cars in the parking lot, but I believe that's deceiving.
Are there? Are the tenants that are currently there, however many there may be? Do they understand that they're going to be, I mean, are they under lease? Are they month-to-month so that you can have them leave?
Currently, we're under contract for purchase of the property, so it is still owned by.
Got it. And is your, or is the purchase of the property contingent on approval?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd like to add on to that question. Is there, is there then contingent funding that's already been secured for the development of this shape and scope?
Yes, sir. The Providence Group of Georgia has a public partner, Greenbreak Partners. So we, we fund everything through them and don't have to obtain, you know, bank financing or we don't have to raise equity.
Okay, so this, this, this has real legs. It's not, it's not a hope and a dream. Okay. Sorry, please continue. You're asking great questions.
I don't remember what I saw in the packet, but I got the impression that there was. I don't want disagreements too strong a word, but there was some not completely buy-in to linking. The path around the building to the existing. Walkway that goes to Bridges Park. Is that an issue?
The trail system?
Yes.
There is a, there is a gap between the end of our property and where the trail is. And then between there, there is a fence, so we cannot extend the trail off of our property through that fence.
So it's, you don't think that you are able to connect to the current path? Is that correct?
Not off of our property. We can, we could extend it to the edge of our property, but we have no rights or authority to extend it off.
And maybe there's a question for staff, but what is the fence?
So Lincoln Parkway on their property is, like I said, a permanent easement. When it goes past their property to fourteen fifty-five Lincoln Parkway, it's actually public right-of-way there. The fence there is the fence around the townhomes. My guess is when they just built that fence, they built it a little bit into the right-of-way by accident. So moving that fence, you know, the city does have the right to do that. So the fence shouldn't be a problem. But yeah, that's public right-of-way behind, behind this property on Lincoln Parkway.
That's to the north of the property? Is that right?
To the east.
To the east. Right.
North is up on the plan.
Isn't Lincoln Parkway to the? Is fourteen fifty-five an office building? That's all the questions I have. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Just want to say I'm, I'm generally supportive of the type of use you guys are proposing. But also agree there's not quite enough information yet. So hope to get to a few more answers and then see what you guys have next time around. One of my big concerns here is the fact that you guys are adjacent to two eighty-five. So even, even under current conditions, there's going to be a lot of noise coming from the highway. And then in the future, there will be the elevated managed lanes along the top end. Which will elevate traffic even higher, create even more noise. I didn't see anything specifying any type of noise wall or any type of noise abatement. Just curious what your plan is for tackling that, because I imagine it's going to produce a lot of noise. Could make living, especially on those end units close to the highway, pretty undesirable.
Oh, you know, well, in that permanent, he's been in adjacent to it on the landscaped area. We will have landscaping in that area. As far as a noise abatement wall, that's something we would have to coordinate with Georgia DOT. In their plans for the expansion of two eighty-five and those elevated planes.
It's generally, and this is, this is generally GDOT practice is if there's a residential use. Adjacent to a project like this, they will build a noise wall. Time is sort of off the essence in that sense. Because the, the development needs to be in place or it needs to be satisfactorily. Sufficiently kind of like constructed at, at a time. So it's, it's about, it's a timing issue, kind of. If, if the development, if pretty much if a development is in place, GDOT will build a noise wall. If it's not a residential development, if it's an office building to the eyes, they will not build a noise wall. And so that the timing is sort of the question at hand.
Right, and I, yeah, exactly. Like they, they wouldn't have planned for there to be a noise while there now. But they will go in and modify their plans if there is something moving forward that's definite.
Up to a certain, up to a certain point, you know, and then so for presumably is another few years until we reach that point. But I, I could not tell you exactly what that constitutes.
Okay. Yeah, so you, you guys may want to consider what you might do in the absence. Or, you know, if the timing doesn't work out to the extent that GDOT is able to. Construct something to, you know, because it's going to be probably more than just some shrubs and a few. New trees are going to be able to, to abate.
Sure, we, we took that into account when designing this plan. That's why there's. Tried to, we tried to put in units against two eighty-five and, you know, did wind up with one building backing up to it. But we did try to take that into account and there are, there are special sound dampening windows that we can use as well.
So I guess going back to, you were describing earlier, the, the types of units. There was some that would be one unit over another unit, others that would be, I guess, split front to back. So that would mean that you have. So those, those rear units, they would be front-facing towards the alleys? Is that correct?
The, the fronts would still face on the landscape and uses, and then both units would have a rear entry garage to the rear, side by side.
Okay.
And the internal units are accessed through a hallway that has a, a common hallway that has access to both units.
I see.
They look just like a townhome from the outside.
But they, their front door wouldn't be towards the alleyway?
No, no, they'd have a, there's a. Dusty bowl or whatever, a front door here and a front door here. So they, and one of them, I think it's this one goes upstairs to the top units and this one goes into the bottom unit. So from the exterior, they look just like.
I got you. Okay. I think I just misunderstood there. And then the, the rear. Both garages are accessed through the rear alleyway, correct? And so it's two side-by-side driveways for each, for each, I, I don't want to say building, but, but row? Okay, so you could have someone in the one-car garage, someone parked on the driveway behind it, and then side-by-side the same thing. So, so you, essentially for each row, you could have four cars parked in that. Okay.
Again, just basically looks just like the Townsend Town Hall from the exterior, except for there's, you know, divided between two garage.
Gotcha. And then how many, on, on top of the driveways, how many guests parking spaces are you guys including?
There are, one second, thirty-four, is that right? Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two for. Hundred and twenty-two units. Okay. And you feel like that's sufficient?
Yes, because a lot of these units, they're two and three bedrooms, but they're occupied by younger couples. Young couples, so. They're not going to be living in each bedroom. Oftentimes in these types of developments, they'll have or use one or more bedrooms. As either a guest unit or a home office and then live in or sleep in the main bedroom. So they, they typically have one car or they may have two cars.
Okay. Then trash collection, is that all in the alleyway with that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that safe to assume?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, and then what? What are you proposing in terms of decks, balconies, et cetera, on the, the front and the rear?
Each unit has an exterior living space on the, in the rear, I believe. I'm drawing a blank on one of them. They all have an exterior living space. And we can, when we come back with our full elevation, so we can describe that in better detail.
So generally, with the, the condition that staff drew up, you guys would. You expect you would essentially be meeting that. I forget exactly how it was worded, but I think all units had a balcony of a certain dimension that needed to be accommodated. And same with like rear, rear deck.
I'm going to have to go back and look at that condition again with our architecture. I think the rear decks, I think, are satisfied. I'm not sure about the front.
Okay. Right. I think I just have a couple of questions for staff. Madeline, you had the condition, I think it was number five, calling for interparcel access to, I think, sixty perimeter center east?
Correct.
I, I wasn't sure which property that was or where the current interparcel access was.
Yeah, I can show that to you on here. Fifty-six, or excuse me, sixty perimeter center east is this office development that is to the west. And the star is where that interparcel connectivity is located. And that's actually an existing path that's already there.
And then your other condition about visual divisions of the different rows or units? I think it's condition seven. The front elevate, yeah, that elevation, is that essentially what they're showing there? Is accomplishing that? You're just codifying it so that you're ensuring that that's carried forward, correct?
Correct. So generally, when we approve elevations or we approve, you know, site plans, it's something that's substantially similar. But especially for visual aesthetics, that can be very, that can be variable. So we wanted to have something a little bit more measurable so that we can ensure a very, you know, a similar product to this.
Understood. So that, what we see on screen accomplishes what you're looking.
Varied materials, that vertical division that reads as townhomes, that is the, the goal of the, that condition. Just so that there's not a single wall of, you know, all one material. We don't want it to look like just one mass of a building.
Okay. My last question is just about, this is proposed as condos owner-occupied units. I, I don't think there was a condition to, I guess my question is, what, is there any teeth to? Holding the applicant to that. Being owner, owner-occupied. Does that need to be a condition or is that something else in the city codes? That are going to make sure that we get owner-occupied units and it doesn't get converted to rentals?
So that's a part of the overall development plan. So. We didn't reiterate that in the conditions, but if that's something that you guys are comfortable with, you know, or want that, we can also reiterate it in the conditions.
If it's part of the plan and that's going to hold them to that, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some additional. Condition that we needed to, to add. So I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Shin.
Madeline, I have a question. So this is rezoning from a O dash I to a PD. Can you, I guess, why does it not just go to fall within the residential classification?
Yeah, so we went through a bit of a, a journey with our perimeter center zoning district. So the future land use here is. um, is specified for, I believe, PC dash three, um, the PC dash three code is, um, uh, a form-based code, and it's very specific, and we just felt that when we were reviewing it, um, that the way that the law is set up, um, along perimeter center east with its limited frontage and the fact that it's all internal access drives, that it wasn't really necessarily written to accommodate this sort of development, and we feel that the, the planned unit development districts give um, developers and also the city a little bit more flexibility, so that they are not having to ask for a lot of variances to the code, it, it makes things a little bit more cleaner and simpler, um. So that was the reason behind going to a PD zoning.
And where else are there examples of this zoning being used?
So the Park Center zoning district is a PD district, um, and then also over, um, the George, the new Georgetown neighborhood with the new public park, uh, near Pernoschel uh, park, that is, um, also a PD. If you remember, it's by the new Emory Medical Building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that area, that's a PD.
Um, and then one more question before I have questions for the applicant, um. So with the deferral, and then if it gets approved, just like every other rezoning case or anything like this, we're approving that they can build up to that amount, but they could always build this in phases, right?
They could build in, yeah, this is setting the maximums, so the maximum amount of entitlements, they could do less units if, if needed, or, um, you know, up to, it's a maximum, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, question for the applicant, and maybe this is also kind of a question for the city, but what, um, why wasn't Lincoln Parkway don't, like, donated to then be public right-of-way, so that entire road is now public access? Are there not requirements for that? Like, why, why keep it private with just easement?
It, it was already, uh, private, uh, roadway, we had, we didn't have discussions with the city as far as dedicating a right-of-way uh, for Lincoln Parkway. Uh, we developed, or we planned around, uh, the existing property as it is now, in maintaining the, the current access easement.
Um, and for the city, that wasn't a comment that came up from Public Works? Or they didn't wanna maintain or own it?
Yeah, we've had that discussion with the Public Works Director, um. He doesn't wanna take on more responsibility than he already has, and it would require the developer to redo the entire street, uh, to bring that up to current standards, so, between those two, he said, as long as we have the easement, he was good.
Okay, yeah, it's just weird to have like a public road on perimeter center and like a gap and then have a public road, um. And so with that, I mean, I'm in favor of the condition of having that trail be on the north side, so it better aligns with the trail plan. Um, and connecting down to the, even if it stops at the property line, it would still then tie into the existing trail that's there, um. I guess another, like, question or comment condition for when the site plan comes back to us, is to have the seventy-five-foot stream buffer also be on the plans. Um, just to understand the requirements from the state versus the city stream buffer, um, and what structures might fall within that seventy-five-foot buffer. Um, I guess my last question then too is, those guest parking spaces, you're showing some of those, those twenty-two on Lincoln Parkway. Um, do you have a plan to have that like fenced or gated, uh, like what's the access to the, the units in the site? Either both from perimeter center and from Lincoln Parkway?
Well, we are not planning on having, it's not gated, um. And the parking, the parallel parking along Lincoln Parkway would be accessed by the, uh, residents, uh, open to the residents, it would have to be maintained by the HOA if there's a issue with other people parking in those spots.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, uh, just a couple questions for staff, I think, at this time, um, most of what I wanted to know has already been hit, so.
Sorry, just to clarify, sorry to interrupt on the last question. Our understanding, Lincoln Parkway would absolutely not be gated, but there has been talks of gating the internal access drive to prevent, you know, vehicular traffic internal to the townhouse development, but that's all separate from Lincoln Parkway. Just for clarity.
Uh, how is the city, uh, presently regulating short-term rentals, like Airbnbs?
So the way we regulate short-term rentals is in our residential code and, and the way we define our uses for residential, um, we say that anything that is less than a month-to-month lease is considered lodging, and lodging is not a permitted use in a residential district.
How many enforcement actions has the city, uh, undertaken, let's just say in the past twelve months approximately, you don't have to give me an exact number?
Three or four, but it's hard, it's difficult to prove that, uh, they're actually renting there, so.
Okay. Are we concerned about a unit like this being, being so near offices and jobs, and it's a great location? We concerned about that, and if so, is there, is there something that, that, that we as planning commission can recommend that might help?
What you all could do is similar to, uh, village townhomes, you've limited it to ten percent or twenty units, or how, how many, many felt comfortable with?
Now, if I, what I'm hearing you say though is, right now, they're not proposing to rent any of these. What you said is the way we would control it is by saying you could rent ten percent, uh, kinda going the wrong way there, or, or am I misunderstanding?
My understanding, um, and I can pull up the language of the, the ODP directly. But my understanding is that there is a provision in there.
I would add usually the HOA, like, I live in a unit like this, the HOA limits how many units can be rented, and then they are usually the one that's like enforcing that.
Yeah, you can see that they would, um, impose a rental restriction. Um, now, if you're specifically concerned about short-term rentals, um, we can, I don't believe that their ODP addresses short-term rentals specifically, but that is a change um, that we can request, um, to the overall development plan, that way that is specifically addressed. Rental restrictions are addressed by the, by the overall development plan, but we can add in a provision about short-term rentals.
Yeah, I, I would encourage, I would encourage all of us to, to put something in there, so we have some certainty about what we can expect.
We can have it mirror the language of, of the code in that regard.
Can you point out where in the overall development plan it talks about, um, owner occupied rentals?
Yeah, let me scroll through the package, might take a minute. Sorry. That's the law.
I did a search in the PDF, and I found two places in staff's memo that mentioned o- owner occupied, but didn't give a percentage.
We can, we can add a specific percentage if that's something that you all are comfortable with. Um, and we can bring that back as a specific percentage restriction and an additional restriction on the short-term rentals as well.
I would encourage that, okay, thank you, um, second question, I think this will be my final question. Um, I saw a statement in your presentation indicating that, uh, the traffic from this would not be burdensome on the neighborhood, and we had two folks come and speak with us today, you know, uh, in favor of the project, but, uh, with some concerns about construction schedule and traffic. Um, construction schedule, obviously, it's too early to talk about, but traffic, how do we know that it's not gonna be burdensome on the, uh, the area thoroughfares? What's, what's our guarantee? I, I've heard you say that, so we, we, we probably have proof, I'm just wondering what that proof is.
So the city, uh, is going through, because it used to be a four-lane uh, road that was striped to go two lanes, uh, with turn lanes and whatnot. But as a woman said, it's a speedway out there, um, so we're actually going looking to redesign the road and abandon half of it, to turn part of that into pedestrian trail, um, by path. So it'll actually, yeah, go down to two lanes, so, instead of four.
Are we worried about the burden that that place is on through traffic, that sort of thing?
No, because residential has much less of a, a burden on, than, uh, commercial does.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, I think that'll, I think that'll do it for my questions, are there any follow-ups or anything else anybody wants to talk about at this point? Uh, I've, I've heard everybody pretty much that's spoken to us in, in an official capacity today ask for a deferment. Um, so, uh, again, that doesn't mean we have to give it, but I don't know, it would be a terrible idea with this project of this scope and size, so, I'm certainly open to hear any, any questions or discussions, or if there's somebody ready to make a motion, I'd be happy to hear that as well.
Just kind of a procedural question, I know we, we floated a few ideas about improvements to the plan that we're hoping to have, or hoping to see between now and, uh, next time it comes through, through our committee. And also, Thomas, you mentioned some conditions that you would like to encourage staff, I, I'm assuming we don't with a deferral, we're not trying to tack on conditions, we're relying on staff to kind of, uh, take into account some of the questions and ideas that we've thrown out and work with the applicant to, uh, to make it a better plan and more information, so that we can see it in a better shape next time around, right?
Yeah, I, I think my, my, my take on this is, we go, if we're gonna ask for a deferral, we defer it clean. But again, let's remember, we always have the, the, the veto power, if our concerns aren't addressed at the next meeting, our simple solution is to vote no, unfortunately, that'd be the only bite of that apple we get, but we have limited power.
Right.
Is there a motion? Or discussion?
Okay, uh, I, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, at staff's request, and I, I agree, I make a motion to, um, defer RZ twenty-five oh one so that, uh, staff has an opportunity to work further with, uh, the applicant to improve the development plan.
Would that be a thirty-day deferral?
Oh, yes, thirty-day deferral.
Okay, so I, there's a motion on the floor for a thirty-day deferral pursuant to request of staff and applicant.
And Mr. Chairman, just like, uh, let's say, kind of like it's a deferral to the regularly scheduled April meeting.
Thank you, okay. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna restate that, and if I get anything wrong, let me know. Uh, there's a, uh, a motion on the floor for a deferral to our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, to accommodate both staff and applicant request, did I state that motion correctly?
Stated it better than I did.
Thanks, uh, is there a second on that motion?
A second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, is there any debate on this motion? Uh, hearing none, then it's appropriate, uh, to vote, all in favor of granting the motion, raise your hand, please. All opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously, uh, thank you, everybody. All right, uh, is there any other business at this point? Okay, is there any, uh, public comment? All right, is there any commission comment? Uh, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and take a moment and do some quick commission comment, and I'll, I'll beg everybody's pardon for making this meeting longer, but I'll, promise I'll keep it quick. Uh, we, we met in November, uh, and when we met, we were discussing the, the Lidl property. Uh, you, you guys will remember that, one of the things we spent time on, both meetings, and it took us two votes, uh, was a recommendation about the timeframe, that whatever development there would be allowed to operate under, and restricting the timeframe at the request of the people that came before us. Um, did anybody attend or watch the council meetings, the first or second read of these, anybody? Uh, one of the things I noted, uh, both in the materials that were presented to council, uh, as well as the presentation thereof, is that our request to, uh, uh, revise the time was, uh, uh, was given rather short shrift, no language was proposed, uh, nothing was crafted. Uh, in fact, the only comment on it of significance was staff doesn't recommend this, cause it's too hard. Uh, and in fact, a joke was made, uh, or a quip was made, uh, regarding our police carrying a zoning book. Uh, I believe is what was said, and I heard that and, uh, it frustrated me, because we had a whole lot of people here sharing their concerns. Our decision, I believe, reflected those concerns, found middle ground, not only that, but also, uh, uh, received the consent of the applicant. Felt like we came to consensus. That consensus was then, in my opinion, now speaking strictly for me, uh, trumped when our decision was brought to council. And so, my, my question, and it's rhetorical, it doesn't need an answer, my question is, why was there no feedback indicating that this was completely impractical and inappropriate? Or in the alternative, why was language not proposed for council to consider, even if they threw it out, that's their right to do so, but no language of meaning was, was presented to them. And, uh, I will let everybody in earshot know, I have heard from multiple constituents on this very subject. And they're not happy, and I don't blame them. And, and I, you know, again, I'm not sure if there's anything to be done, but what I'm asking is that everybody in earshot consider a different approach in the future, especially when this body, which I believe reflects the will of the people in many things that we do, and just about everything that we do, tries to find common ground, find consensus, make recommendations, so, with all that said, I'm going to go ahead, excuse me. And in my comments, I do feel passionately about this, this is something that's very important to me, I believe that we do great work here, and I don't wanna see that work being given short shrift, and so I would urge everybody to just be mindful of this, all right? Uh, at this time, uh, we stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.